All right, we're gonna move to agenda adoption. We have any agenda changes tonight?
I'd like to pull out I two G, consider update to the same sustainability advisory.
And move it to?
Just new business, all businesses in matter, or just have a couple of questions.
That was what number was that again?
Two G, two G.
Anything else?
I'd like to move to F.
It is.
Set a public hearing for the current conduct updates.
That's two G will move to. Guess that's all business, right? Five C, five D. Any other changes? Here now an unattainable motion to approve the agenda with the two G and two F removed going into all business. A motion on the floor. Proper second hall in favor say aye going down the list. Councilman Ron, Councilman John, Councilman Rodney, Councilman Ian, Councilman Rick, Councilman Troy, Councilman Diamond. All right. Agenda change. We'll move to the actually, it's time for. So indications to have the councilman Rick Russo.
Good evening, everybody. Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for the beautiful day that you have given us in the world we live in. We appreciate everything you do for us and we forever thank you. We thank you for getting rid of this terrible virus that's been crippling the world. And it seems like it's slowing up and coming to a close. Please give us the direction that we need to move the town of Harrisburg forward. And as always, we pray that our servicemen are healthy and they give us the freedom that we all enjoy every day. In God's name, we pray.
Stand for a pledge, believe.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a special presentation there. Harrisburg Youth Council update. I'm not sure if you got somebody on that's gonna speak.
Yep. So, good evening, council and members of the public. I wanted to introduce Jaleah Taylor. Jaleah is the current chair for the Harrisburg Youth Council. And also on the call is Sydney Curtis. Sydney is the secretary correct Sydney? For the youth council as well. So these young ladies will provide us with an update on what they've been doing in the youth council and any other pertinent information that they think is important for us. So I'll turn it over to you, Jaleah.
Awesome. Hi, thank you guys for having me this evening, Sydney and I. My name is Jaleah Taylor and like Ms. Diamond said, I serve as the chair. And I'm gonna go over, Sydney and I are gonna go over a brief PowerPoint with you of just the type of things we've been working on this year. All right, is everybody able to see my screen?
Yes, we are.
All right. So to start off with, my name is Jaleah and I serve as the chair and we also have Carly Keller who serves as the co-chair. And Sydney, she serves as our secretary. And then we have Sanjana who serves as our committee coordinator. And then we have Chloe Cook who serves as our social media coordinator and then Lily Jones, Lily Evans, who serves as our sergeant at arms. Sorry. Okay, and then Sydney's gonna go over our initiatives for September.
So for September, our overall goals were to provide educational opportunities for youth to learn more about the town and local government, to provide community educational opportunities related to the youth, the town of Harrisburg, and to connect with the community through community service projects. Our overall 2020 to 2021 year goals were to provide social and political awareness amongst the youth, stay involved as possible throughout the pandemic. And our guest speaker for our meeting for that month was Mr. Erickson, who is the Cabarrus County Board of Elections. And he spoke about the importance of voting and voting process. Also, September, we had games that we played to get to know one another during our meeting. We played Tooth, Tooth and the Lie. Our events brought to your opportunities during that time with the Hickory Ridge Book Drive, which is a drop off for K through 12 level books at HRHS on September 25th from 12 to 2:00 P. M. And the volunteer at the hit pitch in our competition that was on September 26th. And our next meeting was on October 22nd.
For our October meeting, we met October 26, 2020. Our speaker was Brian Lee and he talked to us about the importance of finance and just how to be successful in that area. Our, some of our volunteering events was the Fall Fund Bucket List event, which is where we had kids come and make little pumpkin baskets and also get candy. We had our community cleanup idea, which was to select a date that would work best for a community cleanup. And then we also had where people could submit any ideas they had for the youth council to participate in.
For the month of November, our speaker for that meeting was Randy Sit, who told us how to balance teenage life. Our volunteer, our volunteer opportunities for that month were the Harrisburg Tree Lighting, which was held on December 4th, the House Sugar Reading Contest, which we acted as judges for, and the holiday themed events.
For our December meeting, we met December 15th and some of our initiatives were to have cards for healthcare workers at the atrium health hospital. We also created and planned activities for kids in Harrisburg to get involved in, such as puzzle competitions, cup stacking competitions, holiday art contests, and virtual relay contests. We are still trying to work on getting these out to the public. And then we also had our pen pals for assistant living. The idea was that students and senior citizens will have the opportunity to communicate with each other. And then for our community outreach projects, we had a virtual holiday celebration such as the 2020 Highlight Your Home Contest where we served as judges.
For our January 15th meeting, our speaker was Erin Keighley Paris, who gave us tips and advice on how to deal with mental health as students. Our volunteer opportunities for that month were having cards for healthcare workers, for the MICU nurses, the nurse practitioners, respiratory therapists at CMC, who have worked tirelessly over the last year and are physically and emotionally exhausted. We are sending them cards to our appreciation and they're taking care of the sickest COVID patients in the greater Charlotte area.
In our most recent meeting, we talked about some scholarship opportunities for high school students such as the art scholarship. And then we discussed furthermore, our pen pal with the senior citizens, more kid activities and just how to get those out to the public. And then we also discussed our children's books reading opportunity. And then we discussed the multicultural fest and other volunteering opportunities. And we plan to meet March 23rd at 6:30 P. M. Thank you, guys. Do you have any questions?
Questions for council?
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Jaleah and Sydney, can you please let the public know when the applications will be due for the youth council for this upcoming school year?
Yes, so we haven't decided on the exact date for applications to be due. Normally, applications to apply for the executive board, which would be the chair, co-chair, secretary, committee coordinator, and the sergeant at arms, as well as social media, those are normally due in mid-May. But for people that would like to just regularly apply to be a member, those are normally due in September, but those dates will be posted soon.
Thanks for that update. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I think I have one for Diamond. Diamond, as the youth council is very new to us and looks like it's very successful. As, as these young people start to roll off, go to college, is there an exit interview that's done where we can find out the strengths and weaknesses of the program so that we can continue to make it stronger?
Absolutely. We can get with April and implement that for this year. For the past two years, I think we've had very strong leadership on the youth council and they've done a fantastic job of really coming to council and providing updates on what they've done. So I think we can absolutely do that. So thanks for that, Councilman Selberg.
How many do you guys actually have participated? Diamond, did you hear that?
I did, and I'll turn that over to Jaleah and Sydney.
So this year, due to the virtual setting, we only had about like 15 members. I think, I believe last year we had about 20 to 25 members participating. Hopefully next year we'll be able to gain more.
Thank you.
It'd be great if all of our council members can promote the youth council on their personal social media pages and with their other community members that they know, because we want to make sure that the kids in our community have an outlet to really learn about government and, and absolutely be able to connect with us as adults on things that they want to know about and how we can help support them.
Do they have a social media page? Do they have anything that we can tag on to?
Yes, yes, they do. They are under the purview of Parks and Rec, so any of their social media goes through Parks and Rec to, to push out.
Do they have a page within Parks and Rec?
Um, I don't believe so. Not a web, they have a webpage, not a Instagram or Facebook.
But they're leveraging the Parks and Rec page to put their stuff out there. And like this PowerPoint would be great to have out there on the things that they've just accomplished.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can get April to put that out as well.
Anything else? All right, we're gonna move to public comments. Anyone wishing to address council can do so now. State your name and address. And please try to keep your comments without using names of people in person or nature. So I will go to the chat window first. If you want to raise your hand in the chat window, we'll try to identify you that way. And then we'll go to any emails that were sent in in time. Next, so we've got first one up is Cal. You can state your name and address for the record. Kelly, or is that Kelly? I can't see that.
Kelly, if you could please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Had some system difficulties. Yes, it's Kelly Chapman with Harrisburg Real Estate Investments.
So, there you go, drop me now. You can continue.
Maybe coming later item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Do I continue now or wait?
Is it tied to, is this just something that's already on the agenda or is this something you just wanted to bring up for council?
It's already on the agenda for Kelly Woods. Annexation and resoning.
Okay, you'll have an opportunity to speak then.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address council can raise your hand, or if you're on the phone without being on the Zoom session, you can speak up now. Do we have any emails that you do that?
We received an email, but it was not prior to the time set forth, but I think the council members have it. So I don't know what you guys want us to do with that, but we did receive an email. So.
Read it.
Janet, do you mind reading the email that we received? You don't have it? Okay. I will pull it up and read it real quick. Sorry, Janet, we got this at 5:16 or 5:20 this evening. So the cutoff is typically 5:00 P. M. And we'll go ahead and read this. So this email was sent to all the council members. You have it in your inbox. It's from Christie Burnett at 8226 Anderson Place. The email reads, Mayor and Council, at the February Town Council meeting, an email was read from a resident who was complaining about a council member bullying her on social media and accusing the council member of being at a party that was against the town of Harrisburg's ordinance at the time. This accusation of being at the party was due to her assuming he was there because his wife was in attendance. I am the resident who had the party and let me be very clear. First, I live outside of the town limits of Harrisburg. Therefore, I was not breaking any town ordinance. Second, the resident who made the complaint also lives outside the town limits of Harrisburg. And third, there was no council member at that party. As for bullying on social media by a council member, how is it any different that a council member of Harrisburg commenting on my personal concerning DSS and my children? A council member made a statement, excuse me, made a comment, and the comment, so no one could reply, and then deleted it quickly. The hypocrisy of the town council runs deep in the town of Harrisburg. It's everyone's First Amendment right to post on social media. Let's not pick and choose who has that right. In closing, I will remind each council member, you were elected to govern, not to enable distractions and middle school behaviors. And again, that's from Christie Burnett at 8226 Anderson Place.
Anyone else wishing to address council, you raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, speak up. Give another few seconds before we move on. Does anybody say like?
Yeah, we got a chat. A person said a special thanks to Councilman Dillinger, Councilman Russo, and Public Works Director Rob Dunham for taking the time to walk the Rocky River crossing neighborhood and coming up with, I think, solutions there. So it's a positive comment for those individuals.
And here in the hand raising voice, ma'am, we will move on to the consent agenda adoption minus the two items. Motion approved. A motion on the floor. Proper second in all in favor say aye going down the list. Councilman Ron, Councilman John, Councilman Rodney, Councilman Ian, Councilman Rick, Councilman Troy, Councilman Diamond.
Aye.
Question carries. Moving to communications.
All right, Mayor and Council, just want to give a quick update to you guys and the public on a few projects that the town has been working on that will be wrapping up over the coming weeks. We're really excited that the Harrisburg Park project is coming on along nicely. And we're hopeful for a soft opening of that park sometime in late March, early April. So we ask our residents to pay attention to our website and social media as we start to make those announcements for those dates. We do have youth sports starting on April 10th, so we know that we will have the park open to, before that period. But really excited about coming to a close on that project and getting that open for the residents and the community to utilize. So I'll be on the lookout for that in the coming weeks. Also, two other projects that the town is wrapping up on in the next few weeks is the stormwater projects in the old Harrisburg area along Parallel, Autumn, and Candy Stick Drive. Right now, we have a road closure on Parallel Drive related to that project, so that that road will be closed for the next two days. As we again wrap that project up and hopefully should be out of there in roughly about three to four weeks on that project. Also, another project wrapping up in the next three to four weeks is the new water tank that's being constructed next to Fire Station Two on Rocky River Road. We're hopeful to have that done in the next 30 days and up and operational. So really excited about these three larger projects for the town coming to a close over the next month. We also have budget workshops for the public to be able to attend this week. Our finance director will outline the remaining ones that are scheduled. But we have one this upcoming Thursday that begins at 6:00 o'clock. And so we encourage any member of the public who's interested to attend that. We also have a road closure in town today that started there on Stallings Road. As you go to Robinson Church Road, that's an NCDOT project where they are going to be making some storm drain repairs and some curving repairs in that section of the street. They do expect that road to be closed for a few weeks. So we just ask for everyone to be patient as they navigate that area, as, as folks learn to detour around that closure. So a lot of good things happening, a lot of projects going on throughout town. I will now turn it over to the Sheriff's Department to provide us a brief update and answer any questions that the council may have of things going on related to law enforcement. So any member of the Sheriff's Department that may be available to respond, feel free to give us an update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sergeant Ashley Edwards. I was recently promoted back in Ju, back in August for the position that y'all actually approved in July. So I'm the nighttime supervisor. Just to give you a little bit about me. I grew up in Harrisburg. I've been with the Sheriff's Department for 16 years and I've been in Harrisburg, actually working as an officer for 13 and a half years. So I've been around for quite some time. Last month, we ordered, I'm sorry, last month, we answered 2,616 calls for service. 1,953 security checks were done by the officers. Our average response time for non-emergency calls was 10 minutes and 26 seconds. Or that was, we had an officer in training. And in order to complete some of his training aspects, in order for him to be cut loose, we sent him to other areas in the county, which that actually caused our response times to be higher than what it was for January. The officers last month did conduct 296 traffic stops, which is up from what they had in January. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Sergeant Edwards, I do have one question for you. And I don't know if it's pandemic related or just the nature of businesses change. I've noticed in Harrisburg, we've had more overnight parking with cell phones. Is there any criminal activity associated with any of that at all?
Not that I'm aware of. We're seeing a lot of tractor trailer trucks parked in various different places. A lot of those are still in parking lots though. But as far as the criminal activity involving parked cars, we're not seeing anything related to that that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
Ashley, Councilman Russo here.
Sure.
I want to thank you for taking the position and doing the job you do. I know you've been around a long time and I've been here over 30 years and know you a long time. And I really appreciate that you're, you're doing the midnight shift. And is there any problems on a midnight shift with a lot more break-ins or, or people in cars and driveways and stuff like that on that third shift?
You know, it's, it's just pretty much normal, as far as I say normal. People leaving their car doors open or unlocked overnight makes it very easy target for people to just walk by, lift up the door handle, and they'll run us through your car or they'll take whatever they, they want. As far as that goes, I mean, we've not seen an uptick in anything. We have seen some increase with the amount of housing and everything that's being built. We, we have seen copper larcenies and things like that of those nature. We have seen an increase in those, but that, that comes with the territory. So you can't really secure those houses as good as you would like. So, you know, thieves are basically a crime of opportunity.
Right. Well, I appreciate it. I know nobody tells you like they don't usually don't tell the fire department, but thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate that update. All right, now turn it over to Brian Lee, our finance director for the finance report.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. For your revenue and expense dashboard for the month of February, revenue for the general fund is at about 84% of our budget for the year. That's up 6% from last month. Water and sewer fund and stormwater fund are in the 60s. They have, the stormwater fund is on target essentially for the year. The water and sewer fund, we're starting to see that winter dip. And so that should pick up over the next couple of months and return back to on track for where we are in the year. You'll see the tax collections are at 100% of our annual budget as of the end of this month. One thing I want to point out is that our annualized budget is, has about a 5% reduction in it for the uncertainty for COVID collections. And so what we should see over the next couple of months, what we hope to see is that that number goes up to 103 to 105% to finish the year out. So don't be surprised when you see that percentage go up over 100% over the next couple of months. For our departmental expenditures, all departments other than council, which of course is affected by the CARES Act money, are in the green and are in no threat of approaching even their target budget for this part of the year. And next month, council should drop down into the yellow and finally have that CARES Act money effect spread out over the year enough to not show up anymore. For our other departments outside of general government, all also in the green, very little spending this month for a short month. So all of the departments are in great shape there. And you'll see the salaries townwide are at about 58%, so 9% below budget for the year. Now we'll move into our project dashboard. For our single year projects, not a lot of movement on those in the month of February. Holcombe Wood Soccer Fields show a little progress, 3% up from last month. And that is because the permits from NCDQ were issued. They're in transit. We haven't quite received them yet. But when we do, construction can kick off as soon as they're received. So we'll see a lot more movement on that project here soon, along with the branded facility sign. The annual sanitary sewer rehab got kicked off in the month of February. So that's another sewer project that we'll see over the next about 12, 12 to 14 months. For our multi-year projects in design, the Harrisburg train station progressed another 3%. And then the fiscal year 2122 water lines also moved forward a little bit, but not all that much movement in our design projects right now. For our multi-year construction projects, we had a lot of movement here. As Haynes said, Harrisburg Park is round in the corner and should be substantially complete within the next month. Same for the elevated water storage tank. Britley and Francis Haven moved along really nicely this month and are at 95 and 99% respectively. So those should be finished up in the next couple of weeks as well. And as Haynes said, the stormwater project has moved up to about 80% and has less than 30 days left on it to complete. Our equipment projects are all almost finished out for the year. Our battery extraction tools should be delivered in the next about two weeks. The Kubota has been received and they're putting some of the accessories on it and it'll be placed into service very soon. And then our camstruck collector set, it's ready to be installed, but it won't be installed until sometime in April after the water tank is opened. Our vehicle projects, not much movement on the vehicles from the last month. A lot of our purchasers are, are having trouble finding vehicles that meet our specs. The manufacturers are slow or have not started back yet on a lot of the trucks that we get. So a lot of these trucks, they're out there trying to source them from five, 10 different dealerships. And we've got people looking for the types of vehicles that we want all over the place. So they're actively looking and, and trying to get those vehicles for us. Or as of the end of February, we only had the one Ford received and they are outfitting that vehicle to place it in service soon. And like I said, the rest, they're out there very actively looking to find those vehicles. Our professional services projects, the ADA plan, the assessment phase of it moved along another percentage point to about 96. That plan should be done pretty soon. And what we've done is gotten some of the initial projects out of the, out of the plan and have incorporated some of those into the fiscal year 22 budget request. So you'll see some of those as it relates to building and maintenance. And then especially as we get into a lot of Rob's departments with streets, sidewalks, and other maintenance and repair type of items that Rob takes care of. The Highway 49 corridor plan also moved along. It had, they held a meeting on February 17th with about 25 members of the public in attendance. So it was a pretty good turnout for, for that study. The UDO update also moving along as planned. And they, staff and the consultant are working on draft two, the draft two module. And they should be presenting that to council in the next few months. Any questions on the projects or where we are with the budget so far?
Any questions?
Okay, just real briefly, for our finance update, we held a call with the LGC last week. Rob joined me for that as well. And we laid out our plan for the transportation bonds and the revenue bonds. We went through the project details and our timelines, went over the, the rate study for water and sewer, presented that to the LGC, and just got complete staff support from the LGC. And we got our schedule established. And so we should be issuing both sets of bonds at the same time in May. And so next month, the April Town Council meeting will have a lot of debt related objects to get everything adopted and in line. And then in May, we will, we will award those contracts and we will issue our bonds in mid to late May. So we have really good progress there and everything is on schedule. You should have received a budget packet today at your homes for the Thursday night meeting at 6:00 o'clock. And that meeting is for the fire department, deputies, and Parks and Recreation. Those are also available in the drop box if you need those digitally. And then we have two more meetings to finish out our regularly scheduled ones. March 23rd, are all of Rob's departments, engineering, streets, environmental protection, water and sewer, and stormwater. And then April 8th, we'll kind of bring the whole budget together with revenues and financial models. We did send out the other three placeholders that we decided on a couple of months ago, just to get those on your calendar, make sure we didn't lose those dates. So you saw those come across today as well. And they're available. So you saw those come across today as well and uh, they're available if we need them after April eighth. That is all I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Ryan, thanks a lot. We appreciate the detailed report.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else? Right. Just a quick update on the uh, task force, the Rashid likely task force. So we've concluded the first survey and actually shut that down. We had about five hundred people actually completed. They didn't necessarily finish it all the way. I think it was a little lengthy. By the time I got to the end, it probably got done. But um, so right now we're actually analyzing the results and probably come up with some recommendations for council at the next meeting. We'll have the leader of that that particular subgroup actually speak to council. So what they're looking at is obviously the answers. They're not going to go through the survey one by one. They're going to come back with recommendations against what we learned. And I could tell just preliminarily looking at it, I think a lot of it's going to be just education. If a question was asked, a large percentage agree or or strongly agree that cops are engaged during the community doing the great things, but also a large number of, I don't know, and unsure, which tells me that they're just, you know, we're not educating enough or putting enough information out there about some of the aspects of what the what the sheriff's department is doing for our community. Um, a lot of them were actually lined up that way. It was almost a equal percentage split. I don't know versus strongly agree, everything is great or so we'll have some more data on that. We're also leveraging a report that came out of Durham and an extensive committee go on and actually create a pretty lengthy report. Um, and not to to steal shamelessly, but we'll look at what their report says and kind of maybe adopt some of the things that may be more applicable to us. It's apples and oranges as far as the size. They have hundreds and hundreds of police officers, which also obviously adds lots of other opportunities. Just looking if there's anything from the systems that we're looking at, which is police, education and health that we can leverage and possibly bring back to Harrisburg. The other two subcommittees that are underway, which is uh, education and health, will be wrapping up their survey um to go out. Health is actually going to go next. We hope to release that in April, run it for a month and then follow that up with education in May. And after each one, it'll be about a thirty-day window of analyzing the results and then them coming back to council to present the findings based on uh, the questions that were asked. In addition to just looking at some of the data that was supplied for for police, we we got a lot of demographic data about tickets and things like that in our community. Same thing with education and health. We're grabbing a lot of data. They're going through just tons and tons of data to see if there's any opportunities. Probably the biggest opportunity is the data itself. We're not getting down to a granular level. That can be more meaningful for us to be able to say we have an opportunity or not. And obviously with each each of these three systems, we're relying upon the county, right? The county pretty much services the health situation, education and obviously the sheriff's department. So we'll be partnering with them as we learn more and some of the things that we're seeing based on the data and hopefully getting uh, better data at schools right now, trying to get down to a level of Harrisburg and really digging into the things that we that we want to see. So more to come on that. We should have our first um, lead come in April to talk about the police survey.
Could I ask you a question on that survey? Going forward, is it uh, procedure to release it to the media before releasing to council? There was an article over the weekend about all the results that came out and
She's on, she's on my committee. So I didn't know she was doing that.
I mean, I I guess from council, it would help to to understand.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think, but now I remember she's actually sits on the committee just from awareness. I didn't realize she had. Did she post information about the result? Really? I have no idea.
An in-depth article. In-depth article.
Really?
Yes.
I missed that. She didn't say anything. I mean, I, she just got it.
So you're still analyzing the data?
I mean, we're literally
Haven't even looked at it and a reporter's out there reporting on it. I I'm sorry, Mayor. I have a problem with that. We need to correct that.
Absolutely. I didn't realize.
She tied it back to the census data, the the community, which there there was, I mean, I just would prefer.
I know, I would too. I didn't realize. We were, we hadn't even, literally the committee is looking at the results and we just got down to the actual data. And we had first, it was the power uh, PowerPoints coming out from PDF off of the program on a key. We were looking at, because you need to filter out, Harrisburg was in there, Concord was in there. There was zip codes that were something that looked like two eight zero seven five, but throw a few extra numbers. We're missing another. So people didn't even know that the code were fat figured. So we were cleaning up what we knew was two eight zero seven five.
And she even says in there, the the sheriff's office is going back, looking through it and wanted to uh, realign the data and understand it. So it didn't sound like to me that it was ready for prime time.
No, it wasn't. I had no idea she did. She did not ask me any questions. I didn't realize. I know she's on my distribution list. I have no idea. This was just more, hey, this is where we are. We're still analyzing results back to the whole group. But the subcommittee is still reviewing the data. So she's probably online. We can have that discussion. Anything else?
In respect, Mayor, is that something that needs to be in the bylaws of committees throughout the town? So that we don't have leakage of any data prior to council.
Yeah, I will talk before to make sure, especially we got two more surveys to roll out. Council, council for comments?
I have a couple of things, please, Mayor. Um, first of all, Haynes has already spoken upon them, but I told that being as the parking wreck liaison, I would bring it up. They were concerned that you go to the webpage and it basically just says the park is closed until further notice. I tried to explain to them that, you know, there was a good reason. We didn't need to be open for two days, then doing work closing two days, et cetera. So I think they understood that, but they thought that they would like to see a little bit more there. I was able to drill down and if I really drilled down deep, I could see more information, but I guess on an upfront, all they see is closed until further notice. So they wanted me to bring that um, to you. And you've also talked about the Stallings Road. Well, they were concerned that we were not being transparent and about the Stallings Road being closed. And I tried to explain to them, we knew very little about the Stallings Road and what was going on there. But I told them as being the liaison, I would bring that before council. So I wanted to do that. Um, also want to bring, it's been brought to my attention that the light that goes across veterans and uh, Roberta at night at seven or eight o'clock and and I should have brought this up last month, that it's only like allowing three cars at a time to go by there. I don't know. I'm not out usually at that time. I don't know if other people are seeing it, but can we check into that and see if it can can be maybe lengthened to get more than two or three cars across?
So is the uh, just for information, it's a cro- going cross forty-nine to Roberta off of veterans?
Yes. Straight across both ways. Um, and then I just want to, and I don't know if now's the time to talk about it. I wanted to get some clarification on the Harrisburg Park ADA compliance. Is this a time to talk to Rob about that or do we wait later?
Uh, Rob is available on the uh, on the call. We uh, we have Parks and Recreation coming up on Thursday night and then we have uh, Rob's uh, report, the following in a budget workshop. Um, I think the last I heard from Rob, and he can hopefully speak to this, is that they were still reviewing it. They had a majority of the park done from an ADA review standpoint. Uh, but uh, Rob, are you available to uh, to make comment on that?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, and I'd miss the full comment or the full question, but I think you were asking for the uh, status of the ADA analysis for the park?
Yeah, and then I have two questions. So tell me about the report. Yeah, what's the analysis?
So we 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 got the, we got a report back, but it only had about eighty percent of the areas we wanted to look at on it. Um, it did have the critical areas because that's what we had uh, verbalized to the engineer that uh, was taking a look. Um, and nothing, everything came back um, that it met the original design, but that was just in the eighty percent that they looked at. So we, we asked them to go back um, and fill in some of the blanks, which they're doing this week. And uh, we should have that information by the end of the week.
Okay, so we possibly would come out with some more things we've got to do to make it ADA compliant?
I I wouldn't anticipate that. Um, you know, we looked at the the big uh, switchback area, which was the 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 major um, concern and they uh, the designer certified that as it met their design and it meets ADA. Um, so everything that's come back so far has met. The areas that we're asking them uh, to go back and look at were areas that we think meet now, but weren't on their ADA um, route. So they did, they just didn't show it as an ADA route. We wanted to look at those and see if they do or do not meet so that we can designate that. But as soon as I get the uh, the full report back, um, I do plan on sharing that with with council and getting some feedback on it.
Okay, Ron, let me just ask you on the switchback. So we're talking about the switchback is the part that's there at the library that goes down to the lower field where the concession stand is, right?
Correct.
Okay, and they're saying that it is ADA compliant with the grade and the degree that it's not too steep or anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That they designed. There was an addition that was added on uh, the previous project manager and that does not meet. Um, and that's kind of that little leg that that comes down from um, sort of near the splash pad. Uh, there's a, there's an extra little sidewalk that was added, part of the original plan and that doesn't meet. And we've got some some ideas if we wanted to make that meet, but um, honestly, there's no ADA parking or anything near that. So um, we'll, we'll just get feedback on what council thinks best course of action on that.
All right. Is there anything, was anything with that being ADA compliant that the handrail was going to be there? So those going down that are using a walker and a wheelchair will have the handrail to grab onto?
Um, no, and I can, I can go into more detail on on how they make that determination and what it is. You guys can see that, but um, but no, basically, you know, I think the the crux is it's designed and and Ian's probably Councilman Patrick's, sorry to be so informal, but Councilman Patrick's probably a little bit uh, um, more understanding of of the ADA guidelines um, as it as it sorts to this. And we had a a conversation about whether it was a ramp or a walk. And they designed it as a walk. So I I think if it was a ramp, there would be um, some different guidelines and some handrails and things like that. But ultimately it had to be under a five percent slope, run slope on a walk. And um, they designed it at about four point seven, came in at four point nine. So uh, they went ahead and certified it as as compliant.
Okay, the last question. So the um, the the walkway that's over there on Sims where you just put in the steps, was that also, that was and I read your notes that you sent out, but was that one compliant to that walkway and it didn't have to be redone?
Sims by the steps.
Where you put in the new steps that go up to the field and it was so steep there, but that walkway that goes where the parking is?
Um, I I'd have to, I'd have to look. I don't, I don't recall. I I think you mean Zmax, right?
The Zmax, yeah. I'm sorry, Zmax.
I believe it is, but I don't, I don't have that uh, plan in front of me, but I'd, I'd be happy to share that.
That's fine. Okay, just checking. Alright, thanks. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
There, I got one, I got one question, Rob. I I might be able to speak to that. Rodney, that that sidewalk isn't even done yet. They're just planting it down. I was there again today. Um, the other one they did for another parking lot to soccer fields is great. I think they're going to do the same thing here, but I've been there every day and uh, they got it lined up with the string, but they don't have nothing poured yet, nothing dug out. So that's where that's, that's where that sidewalk's at.
Thank you, Councilor Russo.
Yeah, Rodney, I only add that it it does matter whether it's considered a walk slash sidewalk versus a ramp. That's what kicks in the the landing areas and the rails and all these other requirements you have to meet. Now, if you have concerns about it, as a town, we can certainly exceed code, right? I mean, nothing says that we have to meet the minimum. We can't exceed. So if you're worried about a hundred-foot run where nobody has a place to stop and rest, if there's a problem, then that's something we can look at. It doesn't matter whether it meets some code or not. We can exceed.
Well, there's a large drop off and and that bothered, that concerns me. Anybody in a wheelchair or on a walker, it's going down and trying to do that curve. And I mean, there's a drop, there's a drop after you go on that curve and I'm concerned about that.
Rodney, uh, let me say one thing. Rodney, I was with Rob the other day. We walked that. I totally agree with you. It's all it is a money issue. If nobody's got a problem with with the money for the railings, me and Rob talked about it. It's very expensive. But if it's for safety, I'm all about it. The other one has that at the other parking lot, but it's more squared off. He uh, Councilman Patrick, like a ninety. It's different. It's not round. But uh, if you guys want to do that, I'm railing, I'm all in for it, but I do agree with you. It is steep, but i- it's compliant. So with, but like uh, Ian said, we can go over compliant all day long. I'm good with that.
Rob, is that the only accessible route down to the lower area?
No, there's a, the the west parking lot and the east parking lot, both are where the handicap parking is located and both of them have accessible ramps to the fields.
Presumably, Rodney, you're giving someone a choice.
Right, which is, okay.
Uh, one more thing, and those ones Rob talked about are not steep. They're almost level right, right in onto the, onto the track.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're much, one is the the west entrance is basically a flat grade into the fields and the uh, the east has a a designed ramp. But we talked earlier about the difference between a a ra- a path and a ramp or a walk and a ramp. Um, the one on the east parking lot is an official ramp, so it has the handrails, landings, um, and everything that would meet those ramp, those ramp gap.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I just had one. Um, this might be for James or Haynes. Um, you've been following this Microsoft pack for the servers, email servers?
Yeah, the zero, the zero day. I'm I'm sorry, stepping in. Yes, um, I have been following that. Um, we are at the latest uh, service pack and uh, you know, update that it requires. So uh, we actually are uh, protected from that. Uh, updates were applied Friday evening uh, to get the latest patch on there.
Because they've said that even if you patched, if they got in before, you're still vulnerable and it's really hard to tell if anybody's gotten in at all. I know they're not targeting government. It seems to be small and medium-sized businesses, but something to be aware of because that takes out.
Definitely on the radar. I'll uh, I'll keep an eye on and uh, see what I can, any further information I can find out about it.
Thanks, Senator. That's all I have.
And Mayor, Council, members of the public, I I do have some comments. Um, so uh, in lieu of our uh, road closures, uh, I would just like uh, staff to keep track of traffic on um, Caldwell Road and Tom Query. Uh, we do have a stop sign, four-way stop at Tom Query in Caldwell. There may need to be a police officer there during rush hour times, early in the morning and late in the afternoon. Uh, this afternoon, I've, I noticed quite a bit of traffic and quite a bit of people with zero patience. So um, keep an eye on that. Uh, another thing, I've fielded numerous questions uh, with all the rain that we've had as of late, the uh, the streams and creeks within the area and um, residents being able to contact DEQ and maybe a contact on the website so that as these streams and creeks um, parallel to their properties, start to see trash and trees. Uh, they can reach out to DEQ and uh, get that taken care of. Um, on the uh, HBA side, Harrisburg Business Alliance, um, we had a meeting on February twenty-fifth uh, with a project update uh, within the town of Harrisburg. Uh, we had great participation with that and great feedback. Uh, the feedback that I actually got from it is, how come we don't know about all these projects? And then it seems to be a a reoccurring theme of, we have information out there. Uh, people don't know where to go find it. And uh, I think it's, it's down to a uh, communication overload. Uh, with everything that we have on our plates today, uh, we may want to look at different ways to reach out. Um, that meeting was very productive and uh, we'll continue to have that on an annual basis. Uh, our meeting on March twenty-fifth is the upcoming meeting. Uh, we look, we're looking to the executive board to be able to have that outdoors behind uh, town um, town hall and also have it online. So hopefully we can get some more participation and I invite those members of council to also join us.
So kind of tied to the project discussion, obviously these are businesses, they're not going to get what residents get or they're familiar with each other, but we have, like, she's on that board, right? So why wouldn't they just have a standing, hey, you got anything for a project perspective you want to let us know about? In either session, whether it's the the exact session or the monthly ten-minute update on projects, just it's not a secret, right? We have a membership on that board. Obviously, we're all.
Yeah, uh, several members of of the business community are residents of Harrisburg. And they were actually uh, informed of some of the projects that we have going on.
I think there's just a standing session or part of both of those meetings to say, there's a ten-minute update of what's going on in Harrisburg. And if you missed the last one, you really can go find it. And that's the way to start. And if those guys are, that'd be a great opportunity.
We'll do that.
Troy, is Tom Query able to reach uh, Robinson? Is free? Yeah, well, we, but you, you can get to there, right?
Right.
It goes left.
So they're following back the other way where they realize they can't go anywhere. When they read it, it's back up, part of that problem should get a little bit of the yet. Coming to the bridge of represent, suspect it's going to get in the paddings and shot up the phone back.
I did, I did not realize until this afternoon. You guys need to, you need to think about that, right?
We got a great road for you.
We need a couple more roads, right?
And suppose there's something going to happen on Stallings on the other end, but we don't know what yet, but.
Yes.
But Hickory Ridge is still a problem too.
But let me tell you, coming over, all that traffic was gone on that bridge because they couldn't go by Stallings to get over to Tom Query. It was like.
Oh, I took a right out there on Hickory Ridge and Stallings. I'm like, oh yeah, there's nobody there because there's a tractor over there.
That's right.
And it's funny you say that because when I came, made a right off of Caldwell on the highway 49, the turn lane was backed up all, almost to the next stoplight. And today it is what it is. Tomorrow we're going to have a bunch of upset residents.
Are we compounding the problem with that in parallel?
Hey Troy, you should live on the other side of the tracks.
I live on the right side of the tracks there.
Oh. Yeah, but you got all the traffic, my friend.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
You may have a point there in terms of parallel. I'll get Rob to kind of take a look at that. I don't know what we can do from a project perspective on that, that they've opened the road up there. We may be too far into it, but we'll see what we can do.
So I assume this afternoon, I mean, I assume they quit it for like most construction. So during the heavy time, I mean, I had to take it today to get here.
Stallings is only this month, right? Just a couple more weeks.
Yeah, they're expected to open back up on March 28th.
That's what 20 days.
Usually they block it off and leave it sit, nothing happening for six months before they start digging off to give the ground ready.
Well, if we remember the bridge.
Right. Oh yeah. Caldwell, with blocks up and nothing happening for how long?
Yeah. And it was only going to be a, a very short project and it turned into very lengthy.
And you know, while we're on that subject, I sent you guys the, the PowerPoint PDF from the MPO this last month. We had the finance director for North Carolina come in. And probably the biggest takeaway from that meeting was that they were a bit surprised how much money they got back from the feds. And their projections of doom and gloom were not nearly as doom and gloom as they expected. So I think what we're starting to see some of these projects is kind of like, oh, we have a little bit of money. We're trying to get some of these high items or quick items that we can knock off. So it wasn't like the plethora of funds opened up, but they were more willing to do things in the, in the space that.
How do we get our priorities in the queue or at least notice by this cap? I mean, I know we have a list, but that, that would keep having ours.
And, and I requested that Sushil and Phil Conrad got, got together. Rob was able to attend that meeting. Do you want to gloss over that?
I, I don't have an update from, from that. I did talk with Sushil about meeting with Phil Conrad with the MPO to discuss the projects that we have in queue. Obviously our biggest focus lately has been the intersection improvements that we identified with the transportation bonds. So those have been sort of the most ready projects that we have had. But we are queuing up ideas and things that we have in play for our larger transportation picture. And, and I have a great starting point now with the adoption of the transportation plan just a few months ago. That puts us in a really good position to now narrow in on some of those more specific projects.
Supposed to fix our, our, at least figure out whether they're going to do the veterans bridge or that kind of.
We've got some options that we'd like to present to council during the workshop for the Public Works Department and Streets. So next week we'll, we'll have some options for you guys to think about and consider.
But I thought NC DOT said they were going to do something as a result of the neighborhoods and still that, that, I'm almost positive we had this discussion. We're not, that DOT was going to do something with, with veterans as a result of the bad design to begin with.
Supposedly, but we just never knew. I mean.
And that's a critical intersection, especially the more it gets down Stallings, it's a mess now.
But that discussion was prior to the implosion, I guess you might say of NC DOT and then.
That would be kind of a hot for me. I mean, we're already got the intersection with bomb money up against it. Obviously we want them to participate, but that's been messed up since they built the bridge.
And then the MPO, Phil mentioned that he had had a conversation with Harrisburg. And he threw out the train station as maybe the co-partner doing some work in that space. So I don't know what all happened in that discussion.
Ideally, we need to put veterans right on Hickory Ridge. We know where it's supposed to be back in the day.
So can we get another meeting with DS? Since I've been on council, we've not had that meeting. Can we get that meeting? We're in a room with NC DOT and we ask a bunch of these questions. It's just like, where do we line up? What's it going to take for us to line up and where do we go?
Do we know what our priorities are? I mean, that's probably critical if we have that conversation. Cause if you're saying veterans rather than he wants Caldwell and Tom Query fixed, we probably need to have, figure out what is our number one problem right now? I think we have enough of that with the data from the transportation studies where the biggest pain points are. I'm assuming we do.
Yeah, yeah. The transportation study did identify some problematic areas for us. The priorities that were established two years ago may not be the same priorities today. Two years ago, those priorities were the intersections and the use of transportation bonds and paving and improving the road infrastructure that we currently have, not necessarily adding any new roads. Then we transferred our direction to Caldwell Road Extension between highway 49 and highway 29. We went down the, the path of designing where that road is going to go. But that's where we stopped at that point. And we think that that's financially our best decision because it will now take multi millions of dollars for us to even just design that road from 49 to 29. But we have enough there that will encourage private development. So now we're working on getting infrastructure into that area, water and sewer. And so as those water and sewer infrastructure projects get completed, it'll just really open up that Morehead West corridor. So we can start to refocus on some areas like veterans and Hickory Ridge. We know that that's been sort of a big project, but it's, it's not a project that we've tackled because there's not been support from NC DOT. Typically there's not the political appetite from NC DOT or the Town Council of Harrisburg to go and, and take homes. There's roughly three to five homes in that area that would be impacted by that connection. But there are some opportunities and these opportunities have been revealed in just the last little bit of time. And so without going into too much detail, if we could just hold that conversation for the, the workshop with the Public Works Director, we'll be glad to go into some options for you guys to consider. Councilman Nillinger, to your point, we'll reach out to NC DOT and invite them to a few, a future meeting to give us an update. Thank you.
And I guess to our net, when we talk about in the budget session, can we kind of see what our current priorities are? And see if we at least collectively agree that still looks the same or maybe number four needs to be number one. I'm assuming veterans is in there anyway, just to get a level set up. This is where we are. We think it needs to change.
We can, that's a great conversation to have at the, the workshop as well. When we go over the streets, we'll be sure to note that on the agenda for that day.
Any other comments from council?
Hey Mayor, yeah, I had two things. So April is diversity month. The Harrisburg multicultural festival team will be promoting some things digitally this year for celebration of diversity month. And also wanted to congratulate several of our firefighters who during the pandemic have been promoted to firefighter two and to fire engineer with advanced EMT training. So I wanted to congratulate those guys on everything that they're doing to better us as a community with their education and everything. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So Anthony Evans was promoted to a fire engineer with his advanced EMT training. Wesley Wilson, Nicholas Martin, Neil Stallings, Michael Freeman, Sean McGuire, Brian Ortzik and James Code were all promoted to firefighter two.
Joshua Fox to captain.
Didn't see Joshua on my, I didn't see that on my list. So congratulations to him as well.
Congratulations to all of them, obviously. Good job.
Yes.
Anything else? We did?
Welcome to our new park record.
Oh, yeah. We gotta go ahead and do a plug or you got that else?
Yeah, no, I can absolutely give a plug. So last week we were able to announce that the town has hired a new Parks and Recreation Director, Jim Spina. Jim is coming to us with over 30 years of municipal Parks and Recreation Director experience in the state of New York. He has two adult daughters who live here in the Charlotte area, which attracted him to the Harrisburg position opening. And we're really excited to bring someone with his level of experience to the town. And his first date with us will be next Monday, March 15th. So we look forward to getting him out there in the public and being a part of our programs and athletic activities. And so we're really excited from a staff perspective to, to onboard him. So we'll welcome Jim formally at the, the next council meeting and introduce him to folks. We'll throw him right in the fire with the opening of Harrisburg Park and the start of a youth athletics within the first couple of weeks of his employment. So he'll hit the ground running and we're confident and he'll do well in that.
Council, council, we'll move on. All right, we're going to go to the first public hearing. It's 202008. Kellywood subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first public hearing in front of you tonight is to, is for the Kellywoods conditional rezoning and joining map amendment, H 202008R. So the request in front of you is to rezone one parcel that is 2.46 acres located down off of Plaza Road Extension near Vandora Drive. The PIN number for the parcel in question is listed on your screen. The, the goal here from the applicant is to rezone and also annex the property and subdivide it to be able to build four single family homes. The property is in the county and as I noted, it will need to be annexed. And it is non-contiguous to our current corporate boundary, meaning it does not touch the existing Harrisburg corporate boundary the way it stands today. The current zoning in the county is low density residential. And the request in front of you today for the public hearing is conditional residential low density. That is the Harrisburg joining classification. What you see on the screen is, is the site location on the left hand side just gives you an overall picture of where it is off of Rock River Road and I 485. On the left on the screen, you can see a little bit closer look. This is just one parcel that has been requested for rezoning at this time. Here is just the site plan that was included in your packet along with the staff report. So you can see how the lots have been subdivided. These are, again, four lots. You can see there is a, a open space dedicated on the property. Most of that is, is AT&amp;T easement, but we believe we'll be able to utilize and add some amenities that there for the, for those new homeowners, if this is approved and built. There is also, as part of the rezoning, we've requested the applicant provide eight foot landscape buffer. This is not a requirement of the UDO. Given that the, the request of rezoning is, is higher classification in terms of density. It's a low density rezoning and what is in the surrounding area is a Cabarrus County low density as well. So they all fall under class one in terms of buffer requirements. But we've worked with applicant to at least provide eight feet landscape. They'll provide some, some screening for the new owners and existing owners as well. Since Plaza Road i- is a two lane road and we, we've kind of consulted early on with DOT and agreed that rather than having four drive cuts for each of these homes, there will be shared driveways. So two of these, two homes will share a driveway the way you see on the screen. That will limit the number of cuts and also the friction in terms of number of traffic entering and exiting off of that road. As you probably saw on the map, there is a little bit of encroachment on the, on the state. So, but that will be removed after the rezoning is approved. What you see on the screen is just an example that was provided by the applicant on what those, these homes will look like. These are just example renderings. See is also online and will be speak, speaking after I'm done with my presentation. So you may be able to ask any questions for. Going back to the land use recommendations, so that area, if you look on the screen on your right inside is the light yellow color, which is low density residential characterized by one to two units per acre, primarily focused on growing our single family homes in that area. The low density residential also allows to increase that density to the highest maximum up to two if it is done with conservation design. But this is not your typical subdivision. It's just a, just one parcel that has been requested for rezoning. There is no new streets, anything created as part of this. So of, of course the conservation principles does not apply here. They start on the maps, shows you general location of where, where the parcel is in terms of land use recommendations. I just wanted to have the screen up. Basically this defines what that low density residential is from, from hell up. And how does that translate to our UDO? Because that's where our joining classifications are. When we look for rezoning requests, we try to match what the land use says and what is the proper category that translates into the rezoning classification. In this case, RL is that proper classification and transition of joining from county to, to the town limits. And, and it is consistent with the hell. In terms of adequate public facilities, like I said, this is a smaller community being proposed of four homes. There is, there is no negative impact. Again, we looked at the potential traffic concerns on Plaza Road Extension. And we have kind of grouped those driveways to minimize the drive cuts. The school impact is very minimal. We didn't, we did not get our typical report, but I think four students are anticipated to be generated across all levels. And there is adequate police, fire and sanitation to serve that area. So we did apply some conditions to be consistent with other rezonings that come through us. The first one is your typical that, that covers any local, state, federal permits. If we miss, the applicant is, will have to comply with any of those throughout the process until it is built. We were able to restrict the primary cladding materials to missing, uh, missing or similar products. No vinyl siding. Again, that, that is one of the standard conditions you have seen in, in our rezonings. So that, that applies here as well. One of the new conditions that we have applied, given some of the feedback we've heard from council is that these, these homes and, and you'll see in future rezonings as well, there will be no exposed concrete foundations. The sidings or siding will go down to the level where code allows and the remaining gap will filled by other materials. So you don't see the exposed concrete foundations. We held an ever meeting on December 17th. It was presented to the planning board in February and it was recommended that council approve the rezoning request. We looked at the hell up and the UDO and staff finds it consistent and is requesting tonight to hold the public hearing. We are not taking the action today. We're opening the public hearing and closing it today. Final action on this matter will be taken at the council meeting in April. With that, I will open up for questions. I believe Kelly is online as well, representing the applicant. And she should be able to answer any questions you may have as well.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on the new condition that you had, the number three?
Yeah. So one of the concerns we heard was, I think the council had, they, there was no desire to see the exposed concrete foundation in some of the homes and mostly applies to basement homes, I believe. So what we've done is work with the applicant and, and this, you'll see this in future rezoning as well. The code only allows the siding to go to certain levels because they don't want that touching the ground. But there are other opportunities to either put brick or stone to cover that concrete foundation. The exposed sides on all sides. The exposed sides on all sides.
I know you and I have had this conversation, that, that cultured stone stuff, what I call stick-on. It's required by code to be held off the ground. And as you say, and so is siding and things like that. So then you're requiring a different material, a hardened material below that, that six inches?
Yes. Uh, so that's why we keep it open and we don't really specify what goes in there. So, uh, it will be at, at the time of the construction and whatever the building code allows. Uh, we do not dictate the materials, but we will be reviewing that to make sure the Mecklenburg County Building approves whatever product is applied to those, uh, exposed areas.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, James, if you could unmute Kelly, maybe she, she wanted to speak.
She is showing is unmuted.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much, Town Council, for giving me this opportunity and you, uh, too, Sashil, for, uh, explaining that so, um, perfectly. Yeah. So yes, we're basically looking to improve this vacant land. Teeter and Farmington and then new Novat Help. So it's right there in the perfect location for, for beautiful homes. The, um, the land has been vacant for a long time and, and, uh, we're hoping to improve that land and stay consistent with the Harrisburg codes and everything that's required. So we're just asking, um, for your assistance in approving this rezoning and annexation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The other questions from council? All right, thanks, Sashil. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
We're gonna open up the public hearing for those people speaking for or against this rezoning request, for or against. If you want to raise your hand in the chat window or speak up if you're on the phone, you guys can keep me on the search on the phone chats. Speaking for or against can do so now. Last call, for against? And we'll close this public hearing to go to council for consideration.
Very good. It automatically will, uh, schedule the, the public hearings now been closed and it'll go on to old business for the, uh, just a quick update to the, the last slide showed April sixteenth, the council meeting's April twelfth. So sorry for that, uh, incorrect date on the slide.
Just requiring, we're not going to have consideration. It's gonna be, uh, in the next month. We're adding a month to the process to allow for public comments to continue. And any questions across the way? All right, I guess we're good to do next up for annexation and similarly.
Yeah. So the next, next public hearing is related to the rezoning that we just, uh, talked about. Uh, we just had to take, take this, uh, public hearing separately. But the, again, it is, it is for the request, uh, for annexation of parcel, that one parcel off of Plaza Road Extension. Uh, this is a voluntary, non-contiguous annexation, uh, as required by state law. Again, as I noted earlier during the rezoning, the property is in the county and will be, uh, will need to be annexed for us to serve, uh, by, by the utilities we, we offer. As required by law, we, we publicize the annexation application to the adjoining property owners and also post it, uh, on the newspaper. And here is again, just the map that shows you the general, uh, uh, boundary of the parcel and what will be annexed, uh, and if approved will become part of, uh, town of Harrisburg. Staff is requesting that we hold the public hearing and final action will be at the April twelfth meeting. Uh, sorry for the typo. It will be at the next, next council meeting in April and I request council open the public hearing and close it tonight.
Any questions for Sashil? And then we're gonna open up the public hearing for those speaking for or against this annexation, for or against. Hit the chat window or speak up on the phone. Then I'm gonna close this public hearing and we'll go to consideration on the twelfth of April. All right, next up, consideration with extension of the T I A process through July.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. I think Brian's gonna pull up the, uh, the PDF here for me. So if you give me a, a moment or Brian, do you, are you able to do that? Perfect. All right, um, so thi-this is old business. Um, obviously we'd brought this to council at a previous meeting and we had slitted a few months, uh, to get to here. So I will, um, try to get through it relatively quickly because, you know, a lot of this, we've already talked about. That way we could save lots of room for question, comment, uh, back and forth at the end. But, uh, just for a, a matter of background for, for council and the audience at home, town of Harrisburg has a process in place where we require a traffic impact analysis for certain developments, depending on how large those developments are and what the trip counts, um, are for that development. As part of the, uh, trip development process, the current year traffic counts are taken to establish a baseline of traffic. In, in March of last year, as everyone knows, North Carolina was impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic and we were placed under a stay-at-home order. This obviously significantly altered, uh, the way we do data collection for these traffic counts. And we really aren't able to physically, um, count the traffic. So we replaced it with a traffic growth method back then, so we could get a new baseline number. Now, since that time, the state of North Carolina has kind of ebbed and flowed. Um, we've, we've been locked down. We've, we've opened back up. Certain different businesses have allowed to open back up and, um, the whole time, you know, staff really just thought it was prudent to continue with that traffic growth method. And so we discussed this i-in the fall about how long we would go forward continuing the growth method and it really brings us to today. And we really, you know, our suggestion is we really think July of this year would be the appropriate time to go back to physical counts as opposed to the traffic growth method. And that's really to ensure we're not undercounting that baseline traffic. We think if we go back currently to physical counts, that they would be lower than the growth, um, method that we're using right now. And as we go through the, um, slides here, I'll show you why. You go to the next one, Brian. So what do we do with the growth method process? So to get that baseline traffic count, what are we doing? So instead of counting the current year traffic physically, we use the most recent traffic count that we've done because we've counted nearly the entire town. Um, it might just not be the current year. So we use that most recent pre-COVID count that's available and we grow it to the current year by applying a growth factor. For example, if we assume, you know, an intersection, um, needs to be counted in May of this upcoming year in twenty twenty-one. And our, our most recent count on that intersection was twenty seventeen. We would take the, the count from twenty seventeen and grow it to twenty twenty-one by some factor. And instead of physically counting it, um, we would, we would look back at the ten-year growth of that area. So we look at, you know, what happened between two thousand seven and two thousand seventeen and come up with a growth factor. And then we use that growth factor to project the additional three or four years into the future. So in this case, if it was, you know, three thousand vehicles at that intersection in twenty seventeen and we had a seven percent growth factor for the previous ten years, we'd take those three thousand vehicles, we'd increase them seven percent per year for four years and that would get us to roughly four thousand vehicles or three thousand nine thirty-two, to be specific. Um, that base number for twenty twenty-one then would be three thousand nine thirty-two. So instead of going out and physically counting the cars on a specific day and, and, uh, using that as our, our baseline traffic number, we just use the twenty seventeen count and grow it based on the, um, historical growth factor. We go to the next one, Brian. So what about the rest of the T I A? Like that's, that's how we get the, the baseline number, but there's a lot more to a T I A than just traffic counts. It's actually a very small portion of, of how the, uh, trips are developed. Well, the rest of the process is exactly the same as before. So that is literally the only thing that's changed between the growth, uh, projection method that we're using and the physical count method that we used previously. So everything else that we do in the T I A i-is exactly the same. How do we know the method is accurate compared to physical counts? Well, we can compare the most recent physical counts that we have, um, and compare those against the growth method that we're using. So for instance, our busiest intersections are N C forty-nine at Harrisburg Veterans and N C forty-nine at Moorhead Road. Now, we actually did counts on both of those intersections and several others in February of twenty twenty, right before, about a month before we had traffic disruption because of COVID. And when we looked at those intersections and we compared them, N C forty-nine at Harrisburg Veterans, when we used the growth method, actually produced four point seven percent higher traffic under the growth method than the actual count. So if we would have went back to twenty seventeen and used the growth method instead of actually counting in twenty twenty, our growth method numbers would have been higher. When we go to our second busiest intersection at Moorhead and forty-nine, very similar. If we would have used those twenty seventeen numbers and grown them to twenty twenty, instead of physically counting, it would have been four point three percent higher. You go to the next one, Brian. So here's some, you know, some charts that I just wanted to, I mean, we're not gonna dig too deep into them here as part of the presentation, but.
Can I stop you for one second?
You can.
So what that means is, what you just said for you, the next slide, is more improvements for us. Is that right?
Potentially. Definitely not any less. So if the, the base traffic number that you're using in a T I A is higher, you potentially get more traffic improvements from a development. Uh, you may not, it, it may stay the same, but it wouldn't be any less.
Right, well, right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that before you went on.
Sure, no problem. Um, so here's just the data that kind of summarizes what, what I, um, or fills in the blanks on what I summarized on the previous, uh, slide, which is that if we look at N C forty-nine and, and, uh, Harrisburg Veterans, we did the count in, in November of twenty seventeen. That actual count there was three thousand four thirty-eight. We also did an actual count in February of twenty twenty and that number was three thousand four eighty-five. If we would have taken that seventeen number, that three thousand four thirty-eight and grown it based on the ten-year growth, we would have had a base traffic number of three thousand six forty-eight, which is four point seven percent higher. And, and that's in the A N peak. We also do this for P N peak. Um, and, and it varies by intersection and by project, but that is the, uh, that's the long and the short of it. You go to the next one, Brian? So if you look at, here's again, some examples of historic growth rates of intersections along the forty-nine corridor. So if we go back, you know, ten years from, from the most recent count and look at how those areas have grown, we can develop a, a growth rate number and that's what we're using for each area. So we're not using a flat rate townwide, but it would, it would vary, um, depending on the area. So like the forty-nine corridor has seen, um, some areas with a, with a reduced growth rate, some with an increased growth rate, uh, but as a whole of approximately, um, two percent. So from twelve, two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, um, we saw a two percent from oh eight to oh eighteen, point six percent. So we round those up. Again, we're trying to be conservative here and make sure that we aren't missing any, uh, traffic that would potentially become to the area. So if there's ever a rounding, if there's, if there's ever a, a decision to be made or an engineering judgment, that always goes to the benefit of the town. Um, historic growth rates for southern Harrisburg are obviously higher. Um, you know, if you go to, to like Lower Rocky River and Morrison Road, it's a twenty percent growth rate. Uh, Hickory Ridge Road and Lower Rocky River, um, two to five percent. Peach Orchard, Lower Rocky River, twenty percent. Um, I think you get the, the idea that obviously the southern part of Harrisburg, um, is less established. It also has lower counts overall. So any trips that go there are, are a much higher percentage as compared to a road like, uh, forty-nine that has forty thousand, uh, vehicles a day on it already. It's very tough to double that or to even go twenty percent. You'd, you'd have to really, really see some traffic influxes to make a, a big impact. You, next slide, Brian? So what does this mean? And this goes back to Councilman Russo's question. What's this mean for the traffic improvements? Because I think that's what we all, uh, really when we see these T I As, we kind of flip to the executive summary and say, okay, what do you got to build? Right? What are you doing to mitigate the, the traffic growth that you're putting on our, our system? And since no other variable's changing, uh, the, the rest of the T I is exactly the same, uh, and the growth method consistently produces those higher counts. Um, we can confidently state that all the improvements derived from a T I A using the growth method will require improvements equal to or greater than doing physical counts. Um, again, with, we don't know if it will be greater than, it could just be equal to. But if those numbers are staying this, or are equal to or higher and everything else in the T I A stays the same, then the, the improvements will be equal to or higher. So that gets us back to the, to the, to the other question or the obvious question, which is, you know, what if we just go back to physical counts now? And that's certainly an option. Council can, can, can do that. Um, staff can do that. We, we have no problem doing that. Um, most of the state has returned to, to normal post-COVID traffic patterns and those patterns may not ever increase back to pre-COVID. Um, we're seeing a lot more people stay at home. Um, you know, that, those numbers could potentially stay, you know, relatively low and, and get some break here, um, for the long term. We don't have any T I As that we're doing currently or getting ready to start currently. So there's nothing in the, in the basket. So I think our earliest counts would be late April or early May, but obviously that's always subject to change and, and Sushil could certainly, um, jump in there if, if you know something I don't. But my understanding is that, uh, we wouldn't be doing physical counts, even if somebody came in today until late April, early May. And we pre-we would predict that if we started doing physical counts right now, I would, I would say, you know, based, based, just based on what we've seen out there empirically, that those counts would probably be about five percent lower than the growth method. Based on what we've seen, when we compare growth method to physical counts in February of twenty twenty. They could potentially be much lower if we see a reduced, um, permanent traffic due to COVID. If, if people don't return to work or people, um, are doing more homeschooling, then those numbers could go down. But I, I would expect to see somewhere between five percent or lower on physical accounts compared to the growth method. So the, the, I guess the crux of it is that, that staff, um, at this point wouldn't recommend doing physical counts because we believe the growth method gives us the most conservative analysis and would result in the highest level of traffic improvements based on, uh, the way we're operating right now. So, you know, once, um, everybody that wants a vaccine is able to get a vaccine, wants schools, um, and staff, school staff is, has all been vaccinated and we have so, you know, several months of, um, low COVID numbers. I, I think we could then make a good analysis that the traffic patterns are gonna be the future traffic patterns. But until then, I think the growth method gives us higher numbers so that we don't inadvertently undercount uh, the traffic out there and really shortchange ourselves and not get the improvements that we otherwise would get. You go to the next slide, Brian? So the staff recommendation is to approve, to continue to use the growth method process, to gather traffic data for intersections and complete all traffic impact analysis accordingly through July of twenty twenty-one. At this time, I'll take any questions, comments?
So July, um, obviously is, is school still not in yet. So it's, and I don't, I don't know who's in the queue, but it seems to me that especially during the summer months that we've always sticked to the model. And during the regular business as usual months, we can probably go to the county and you need to reestablish your baselines as you use the model. So I know we keep bringing this back up, but it seems like we should. So I know we keep bringing this back up, but it seems like we should let staff have a discretion and say. You know, summertime, we're gonna always use the model because it makes the most sense. We've got burned before. On not being able to count cars appropriately because school was out or whatever was happening. It seems like we should have something where we can leverage both of these. As we move forward and where it makes the most sense for the town Harrisburg, obviously the model right now is making the most sense if we tend to be a little bit higher. Um, and more conservative. So. I'm assuming there's, the cost of the model is you're just adding to the existing counts, the percentage of growth, right? There's not a cost associated with the model, is there, right?
No, there, yeah, there's not a cost. Well, I mean, we're, we're just taking, you know, some of these counts are February twenty twenty counts. So they're, they're less than a, uh, at this point, they're just barely over a year old. So we would just grow those one year. Um, some of these counts are twenty seventeen, um, you know, those are getting grown four years. The, the more we're growing it, because our, our growth number is a pretty conservative number, the bigger the delta starts to be. So, you know, if, if we're growing a twenty sixteen number to, to twenty twenty-two, let's say. And, you know, the growth is, is three and a half percent, well, we're rounding up to four. So after four or five years, that half percent starts to, starts to add up. In, in the positive for the town. Really, the biggest pushback we get on the growth method is, is from the development community. And they're like, well, you know, it's not my fault that, that actual traffic is low. We want their actual counts, um, as to where the town is, is town staff. That we should have, you know, higher.
Yeah, Robert, Councilman Selberg here. I'd like to, uh, hear a little bit more about, uh, adjacent growth, the growth within the communities surrounding Harrisburg. So, uh, obviously we, uh, we are tracking that, but is that considered in your growth percentage? As we have the fifteenth largest city in United States on one side of us and the, uh, tenth largest. Uh, city in, in North Carolina to the other side of us. So I, I use Rocky River Road, Lower Rocky River Road as a reference. As we see Concord continuing to, um, approve lots over on that side. And what it's going to do to affect traffic, uh, in Harrisburg.
We do, that, that, that goes into the, into the analysis, we don't, uh. We don't stop at the borders, right? We, we don't, I mean, Harrisburg roads aren't all we count, we count DOT roads. We count, um. You know, just throughout the, the entire area. Um, and when I say we, it's not just town staff, we have a engineering consultant that does these analysis. DOT is in on those with us. If it's a border, uh, we'll communicate with the city of Charlotte or Concord on their traffic counts and, and share those across. So, um, there's very little that, that comes in that we, we aren't accounting for. The only time we wouldn't account for something is if nobody knew about it. So if Concord didn't. Didn't know something was coming up, they wouldn't communicate that to us and it wouldn't get into a model. But when we take a look at the, uh, traffic template, which is the next step after you, uh, do the. The traffic counts, that's where we're bringing in, okay, what all developments in this area are, are affecting it? And are they already? Considered in the growth? Or is this something we need to add as part of a growth? And when we were doing physical counts, we would, let's say, do a, a count in twenty twenty. And then we'd say, okay, we know we have, uh, traffic coming from, you know, the public's development. How much of it's built out? It's about, you know, forty percent built out. Okay, we need to add sixty percent of their projected traffic onto this. And that's another step and another layer a- as a part of the process.
Thank you.
So, Rob. When we look at, and I know you mentioned Lower Rocky River, you mentioned Hickory Ridge. You know, when I think of a growth factor for that area, it's stagnant in my opinion right now because there's been no growth over there. You account for proposed developments. When we don't understand the counts, uh, that, that, as they would be, future.
Well, Rob, if, if I may chime in, one, one of the things we do, Councilmember Smith, is so. For the projects that we know, obviously we look at the trip numbers and forecast accordingly. But if we don't know, there is a, there is a step that goes into the model that grows the background traffic holistically in the system by two percent. So that kind of captures your future growth in, in any area that we're doing the TIA. That's, that's one way to, one way to look at that.
It's just challenging because we've not seen that area open to the full capacity given, you know, when COVID hit. So, I mean, it, it still feels like we're throwing random darts in that space, not understanding it. And there, there's already backups now as it is on a, a roundabout that needs to be improved. And, you know, and then when you look back on the other direction, you go back to Lower Rocky River where it meets Rocky River. That intersection has been horribly run for several years and, and we're looking to add more development out there. I don't understand if that's in scope or is that not in scope?
Yeah, so there, there are a couple of projects that are in that vicinity that will trigger those intersection improvements. And, I mean, it has to be within certain distance from where the project is going, that's number one. And number two, the size and the trip generated from a project determines what, what intersection improvements. Or additional lanes, uh, mostly turn lanes are added. So if, if you think about the Lower Rocky River Road, there is a potential rezoning that you'll see in next few months. Uh, we just completed a TIA for that project and that, that TIA is already triggering mitigation for that intersection improvement. And same with the DR Horton project that will be coming in front of you. That has triggered several improvements in that area. So, yes. If, if you see the intersection is at capacity today. If there is a good-sized community that comes in, it is very likely that it will impact the level of service we have today and that will require mitigation.
So clearly the Hickory Ridge School circle was screwed before they, right? It's, it was done before it started, that was an NCT, NCDOT disaster that they created. It's kind of odd that we would get a developer to fix a problem that we, they knew was gonna happen.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the challenge that we all deal with, uh, NCDOT with lack of funding. And they go with bare minimum that works for the traffic. Yeah, and that, and that roundabout of traffic works for the traffic today. But if you add the DR Horton project, then it doesn't. So we're already looking at that project to fix that problem for us. And, and going back to, I think there was a mention about the cost, uh. Definitely the town does not incur any cost with the TIA, it is a pass-through cost, whatever it takes. Uh, but with, with this traffic count numbers that are not, um. Available through NCDOT or Keenly Horn themselves. They had to source them through the national data source and there is a cost to that, but those are passed on to the applicant.
Mayor, um, Councilman Russo here, that's why I agree with Rob, take the higher of the two. That way we're not getting hurt in Harrisburg, it'll make them do the, uh, most improvements on intersections and right ways. And I make a motion to approve.
A motion on the floor to approve the TIA process extended through July thirty-one.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Rob, could you go back to the slide where you were figuring your calculations, please? Yeah, right there on that one. Um, in the verbiage that you explained, the thirty, the three thousand I saw and it worked out, the figures worked out right in four years and it's thirty-nine, thirty-two. But walk me through the NC forty-nine Roberto, because when I start with a thirty-four, thirty-eight. And increase it to four years to February twentieth, I don't get thirty-six, forty-eight, I get much more. So am I missing something?
If you're increasing it two percent, you should get, you should end up at thirty-six, forty-eight.
Well, I was increasing it four point seven because I thought it was four, four point seven also.
You know, so it's, it, yeah, it's two percent per year, so that by the end of four years, you've got that.
Okay.
And, and the four point seven is an increase over what the actual count was. So. You know, if, if, if we compare, if we grew it at two percent over, over those four years, we would have used three thousand six forty-eight. What we actually used was three thousand four eighty-five, because that's what it was when we physically went and counted it.
Okay, but that two percent, based on what you just said, the model, or Sushil said in the background, the model takes two percent growth into consideration?
No, there, there are two, two different things, uh, uh, Councilmember Ryan, so what we're talking about is, is the percentage growth for the traffic count that feeds into the model. And, and, and in this example, it happens to be two percent growth. But the two percent background growth is for a future projection. So those are two different steps in the traffic model. That, that traffic growth to the current number could be anywhere from one percent to five percent to twenty percent. Based on what that traffic projection is over the years. So. Yeah, it, it varies, there's not a standard number, but the background growth we've been using. Is, is the two percent growth because that kind of meets our, our, our growth numbers overall for the, for the future projection. Two different.
When the new TIA's get produced based on this, will we see these chart comparisons in there? Exactly that say, this is what the growth method is showing us based from the last time we counted to where we're going?
Yeah, if you could go to the next page, Brian, um. This, this is taken right out of, uh, the TIA's that we're doing now.
Okay.
But this is, this is what you would see in the mix. That shows, you know, how do we develop the historical growth rate? And then, you know, what, which intersections, uh, had what growth rate applied? And I, I also wanted to speak to the, to the mayor's suggestion there that, you know, allow staff to, um, determine. You know, when we cut this off and, and when we extend it. You know, I, I, I picked through July thinking, you know, we could, we could resume this in August, that's when schools would be back in and, and things like that. But we, you know, we're certainly comfortable. Sooner or later from staff level, when we feel like it, you know, it's ready to, to go back to physical counts. Whether that August, September, or whether it be June, um, we're certainly comfortable if council wants to make that recommendation.
So I want to ask one other thing, and it's probably more of a request that may need to come in a motion at some point. But, um, I know the two developments are down that are coming around Lower Rocky River and, and Rocky River. They are very concerned about traffic, if you listen to those meetings where the residents were on board. And, you know, looking at a TIA study and trying to cipher it can be very cumbersome. Is it a possibility going forward that the conditional rezoning has a page that specifically lists? That this project will require a left turn lane here, a right turn lane here, or this here, or that there. And it's kind of like a summary because we know what's in that conditional rezoning. That's what people read, that's what they look at, that's what they see, and that's what they can cipher. Is that a possibility?
It, it, it is a possibility. Um, I, I believe we do include that as part of the presentation when it comes to the council, but we, we can definitely, um, elaborate on that.
I, I, I think that will be good in helping people really see residents to see what they are getting specifically.
Right. Infrastructure.
Yes. Right now, you have to get, you have to decipher the TIA to understand. Oh, yes, you do.
Yeah.
Trying to determine which way it's going with the errors and stuff. I, I just think it would make things a lot simpler for them.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about the best way to, to show that for sure. My, my only concern about putting it exactly on the conditional rezoning was that it might not be clear enough. Um, there's an executive summary for each TIA that lists the improvements. And has just a little bit of supplemental information, it's usually one page. And, you know, if we can find some way to make that very easily available, if we attach it to the rezoning or, you know, if it's, if it's online.
Or the condition points to that verbiage in the summary saying, you will do these things at the TIA.
Yeah, because it would be in the conditional rezoning.
Right.
And, and it's, there are no question if it's there on the conditional rezoning list.
I'm sure there's a way we can figure it out.
So we thought this is, how many times have we extended this now? It's twice or three times.
Twice, this would be.
And that is much on the floor in a second to, to extend it to the thirty-first. We want to change that just to allow staff to decide when they switch back and let us know when they do, otherwise we may be back in July or August. A new version of COVID comes out, who knows? I mean, we can keep doing this, but it seems like we're already at an advantage to get in the model from a conservative perspective. The natural numbers, and we know numbers are important because we want to read baseline. As much as we can, but leave it to their discretion instead of coming back to council every time.
Remind me who came up with these calculations? Is this from our consultant?
Yes.
This is what they're using? Cause I was looking at your, I think it's on page two, your PDF here.
Yeah.
No, sorry. There it is, your, uh, three thousand times one point oh seven to the fourth. Is that how, is that how they're doing it? Because just, just thinking about it mathematically, wouldn't the growth compound over time? So it'd be like point oh seven plus to the N plus point oh seven to the N plus one. Plus point oh seven to the N plus two, right? Shouldn't it compound over time? I mean, they're traffic people, they know what they're talking about, but I'm just looking at it from a outside perspective.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not a, it's not a compounded. Interest number like you're thinking from a, uh, N, N plus one financial formula. It's a, it's a annual growth factor, not a compounded annual growth factor. Over a long period of time, that would make a big difference. Um, over four or five years. Those numbers are roughly the same, but I, yeah, the, I hope I answered that okay.
Yeah, I just did that one, so that one's like, you get a one point three one factor. If you did it what I was talking about, you get a one point seven factor. So they are fairly different.
Right.
But if, I mean. What do I know? I mean, this is what the traffic people are using and have used successfully.
It, it, it is, and, and we've had that discussion. Whether it compounds annually when we develop that growth rate on the front end. And that, that growth rate on the front end takes into account kind of that annual compounding, if that makes any sense. So if we go over that ten-year period. We could use a two percent per annum, or if we wanted to figure it out from a, uh. A compounded, uh, interest calculator, then it would only be like one point one instead of two, so, you know, something like that. So the fact that we're, we're looking backwards to get that number, it just makes it simpler to use a per annum number.
It also reduces our exposure too, right? Cause this is industry standard.
Yep.
All right, we got a motion on the floor, proper seconded, any more discussion, um, on extended through the thirty-first. All favor say hi, Councilman Ron, Councilman John, Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Councilman Grant.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilman Donovan.
And.
Commissioner Jerris. Annexation request.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council again, this is, uh, annexation request for Selby Woods Residential Subdivision of a Barack River Crossing Road. Again, the request from the, uh, applicant is to voluntary annex this, uh, six parcels. Property currently is in the town's ETZ, so this, this does not require any rezoning. They're, they're building, building thirteen, thirteen single-family homes in these lots as part of, uh, RM one residential medium density standards. Which is, which is Harrisburg's, uh, zoning standard. We published the notice for public hearing, uh, for the requirements of the law and also, uh, mailed letters to the property owners. Uh, if you recall, we held a public hearing and closed the public hearing on, on this annexation request at the last, uh, at the meeting we had in February. Here's a, the map of the property, uh, for your reference, um. Just to give you an idea of where it is, um, again, I, I know there were a couple of questions that came, uh, about during the last public hearing about. Uh, rezoning or why people were not notified, um. This was not a rezoning request, but, um, again, uh, from a public notification perspective, we did. Uh, post the sign and also mail letters for annexation, uh, to the adjoining property owners if they were within, within hundred feet of this, uh, of this request. There were no, a- any specific comments I heard from the council, so, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. But, um, staff is requir- recommending that we approve the proposed annexation. And take it off from the ETZ and bring it, uh, and make it part of the town's, uh, formal corporate limits. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is just a comment to let you know, when, uh, Rob and Councilman Russo and I went out there and walked about the crossings for, uh, Rocky River. That when this partial does become in the city, that the speed bump that is there at the. That when this partial does become in the city, that the speed bump that is there at the entrance. Basically from the Moorhead side will be removed at some point. Correct, Rob? Correct, Sushil?
Sorry, I thought I was, I was gone, off the party. I'm sorry. Yeah, so. Part of that rezoning there, and I, what's the name of that, Sushil?
Uh, the Shelby Woods. I think there was a question about that. I think we talked about the raised crosswalk there.
We, so that, yeah, so the Shelby Woods, when they develop that, they will need to take that out to get their utilities, to get their development in. And it doesn't meet town standards for being there. So putting it, you know, once it's removed, obviously putting it back would violate our town standards, but Sushil and I have had some discussion. With that applicant about installing curb ramps and a, a raised crosswalk to kind of draw attention to. People coming through there to, to slow down. But yeah, as far as the, the speed bump that's there, wouldn't go back.
Go to council for consideration. Question approved. Got a question on the floor? Proper seconded. Any more discussion? All favor side going down the list. Councilman Ron, Councilman John, Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian. Councilman Rick. Councilman Rick. Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilman Diamond.
And.
Hi, Mayor. Couldn't get on.
Yep, you're good. All right, we are going to move to old new business. We'll start with the sustainability advisory board bylaws.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to, I, I see that Scott's on, so I just want to ask a couple of questions. The change in the bylaws did go before the town attorney for, right?
Mary, did, uh, did you want to do new business A first before we got to B?
We were, I put this in old business because it would.
You've been in old business again. My apologies.
That's a good question. Did we pass that through the council? Cause the changes were, were just basically aligned with the other bylaws that already exist. There wasn't anything significant that was changed that would even cause concern from a legal perspective. Zettis made to the purpose and objectives, the board member appointments and the roll offs associated with them and moving it from the 18 to the nine. Where, I mean, it was pretty. And it's gonna be, it wasn't anything that would probably cause legal.
And should it go, I'm just asking, should it possibly not go and be reviewed by the town attorney?
The, uh, the code of conduct?
No, the bylaws.
I'm off on my agenda. My apologies, guys. I wrote it down incorrectly on my sheet here. We couldn't get it for him. Yes.
Um, just a couple of other questions along the same thing. I, I appreciate the board deciding not to take a stipend. Uh, I think that's very, very commendable of them. I did notice where it said that it would be. That would be reenr- be reimbursed pre-approved for trips. And I was just curious who that pre-approver is.
It's a council problem. I don't know. There hadn't been anything planned, at least from that board perspective. So. I would assume if there's any dollars being spent, the budget form would have to come to you.
Is there any limits in there on the trips or the reimbursements expenses? Is that something to consider?
What did we have in some of the other bylaws?
Yeah, we just use our standard per diem that GSA uses. The federal GSA establishes that.
Any travel would have to be, or anything would have to be approved by council. And so, and so far that there's nothing that they're asking for at this time.
Did that come out of council budget or their budget? I mean, cause I don't think they would have a budget.
I think it probably came out of council.
We've got advisory, we've got an advisory board line item that it would come out of that pay. For those folks. And, and if it did not go before council, it would be reviewed and approved by our finance department. And they would confirm the reason for the travel and they would verify the mileage or whatever. That, that expense was associated with it before a check was cut for that individual.
I didn't notice any reference to the council liaison and the alternate liaison. Are you still on the board? Ian?
I don't think so. I was, I was disinvited and I don't get emails anymore, so.
So is there no longer a council?
No, I mean, I, I still go. I didn't realize that you fell off of it because I turned it over to them as the board and Scott Noel is obviously the chair. So he sends out the agenda and the meeting invites. I wasn't aware of that. And it's also public now as well.
Yeah, I'm still on it as well.
And it's right, Diamond's still shut.
Somehow I got pulled up.
Okay. Then the last, last comments, and, and these are probably just general comments is that I want to remind, and I, and I commend the sustainability. I know where we're going with it. But it's more than just providing a sticker because a restaurant no longer provides plastic straws. And we give them a sticker to go in their window. Let's remember that Harrisburg is next to what I like to call Mount Concord and it has grown a number over the years. I know from the Pascavera Summit that, and even Troy has mentioned it in a couple of meetings. That the landfill is approximately seven, seven more years in its lifespan. But this landfill affects us all. At times it smells, it travels in Harrisburg. I notice it across Stallings River, Stallings Road in the mornings. I know I had a resident just in the last couple of weeks say that they were at Lowes Foods at seven o'clock at night and they could smell the, smell it, right? This landfill also goes right beside Rocky River, a very important corridor to the Cabarrus County and the watershed and stuff like that. So I want this sustainability group to also be a watchdog. I want them to be able to, even though that's Cabarrus County, they ought to be on the watch guard. Part to say, look, we need to look into this. We need to think about this. Let's not forget that we have a chemical plant that's beside a neighborhood here in Harrisburg. And I've, I've talked about that before in, in running for council and that I hope that they're a watchdog for that. And that they would be able to keep an eye out to say future when we want to allow a company or allow a development to go somewhere. That the sustainability is going to say, that's not good for the growth of the residents of, of Harrisburg. I, I, I want to also say as we look and we go towards 50 years from now, homes that are 50 or 70 years, all be long gone. Sustainability will still be happening for Harrisburg and that's what it's about. And as we think about the neighborhoods and the way they're built and the products that they're built. When that neighborhood gets to be too old and you tear it down. Where, where's those products? Where are they going? What landfills are they going into? Let's remember the products that we build today that may require each year pressure washing with. Clorox or something, or having to be repainted so often. These are chemicals that will affect the society. So when we talk about sustainability, I just, I, I look in there, I'll, I'll see the carbon footprint. We talk about these things. But I want to be sure that we still have. Other things that are around us that is not truly inside a concord, that's outside and it will affect us. And I'd like to challenge the sustainability to be that watchdog for us.
And they're going to also design in a lot of places that are a little bit more mature than us, actual, actual sustainability master plan that would include everything that you just said. All things that we focus on, obviously we can't do it tomorrow. Over time, these are things we will look at. Scott is on and he's willing to chat for a few seconds. James, can you unmute Scott Noel?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'll be brief. And Councilman Rod Dellinger, thank you for your comments as well. So that is all definitely being addressed and really, you know, we have to come out at a, a very recently formed board. Have to be realistic with the constraints and of what we're working with of getting going as well as the town staff bandwidth and other things. But absolutely all of those things you said and more are what we want to accomplish. And it's, it's not myopic by any means of just within. Harrisburg proper excluding ETJ or any other piece of that. It is looking at it holistically of how everything is interconnected in this area. Of Harrisburg, County, the states, everything around this area as well. Some of the things that we're working on are around the, the waste and it's education of the residents is going to be a key piece of this because to the point around the landfill. Helping residents understand why they need to reduce their own waste and recycle because it's going to impact their bottom line. It's going to increase our cost for waste reduction and waste services. All of these things we absolutely need to look at. Not to mention, we're very focused on health and wellbeing of residents. Between the quality of the water and the area, looking at street and stream cleanup, cleanups. You'll see some more around that. We're going to start doing some more of those officially and trying to help staff formalize, further formalize the product, the, the volunteer efforts they have in place. Without adding to their workload. That piece of it is definitely there. And the piece around the, the buildings and Councilman Patrick, that is probably just a miscommunication. You are more than welcome to please join our board again in the meetings on that stuff. Councilman, Councilmember Diamond. Diamond does as well. So please definitely join those if you, we'll follow up with the offline on that. But I know you're interested in the architecture side and that's where we're working with Sushil and I need to follow up with him. But those are all in the UDOs and that's really where every group and I, I, we would need to have some more committees if COVID weren't around. I'd love to get together with COVID or sorry, with other committee and board heads because all of us need to work together. The sustainability board by themselves can't do it and we are an advisory board as well. So we will advise and help with this. We also want to be mindful what the residents are wanting and needing in the area. So we need to work collectively across every single board, committee, the staff, because they're all need to work together to accomplish what you mentioned. It can't happen within a one silo group. We don't have the bandwidth to do it. But there is interest. There's a lot of interest from residents around there to do this. So. If you look at the list that we've created also within the bylaws, it talks about that with the UDOs, existing developments. We know there's erosion issues that happen at times that this also comes down, this is why I say state, because. This not, this doesn't fall to the, the Harrisburg staff and their, their regulations and rules and their. Monitoring of this, it goes to the Cabarrus County or the state, but the state is understaffed. And that's part of the reason why the streets are, are a little dirty right now because it's COVID. So. All those things are connected that we don't control, but we need to figure out how to help better influence that. And we've got a few, many ideas in mind. So definitely looking forward to working with you all on that further as we continue to get this off the ground.
Thank you, Scott and Rick. Councilman Russo, thank you very much for what you do. We, I appreciate it. I was on the board at the beginning, but that's fine now. Rodney, it looks like you might want to get on that board. You got a lot of great ideas.
I'm glad to just go and listen. I know, I don't mind.
Well, our next meeting is Wednesday night. The agenda just was pushed out, so everyone's more than welcome.
Well, we need to be careful.
I don't mean, yes, right. Yes, yes. We have to follow those, those guidelines. Yes.
Go ahead, Rodney. I'm busy, Rodney. Go ahead.
Well, Diamond and Ian have got it covered, I'm sure.
Who controls that calendar, anybody? It used to come from you. It did. I know. I mean, I just put it out there. It was kind of in deathly. It's the same, it's Wednesday, second, second Wednesday or Wednesday.
Yeah, it's the second Wednesday. Now that it's been formalized on that. Councilman Patrick, I'm happy to add that you should be getting the agendas that are sent out. They're being published through Civic Clerk now. So they, I just pushed one out tonight.
Okay.
So hopefully that's going out to everyone on that list and Janet Rackley can confirm. We had a little growing pains like getting that one off the ground, but everyone should be getting those agendas.
Thanks, Scott. So we'll defer until Rich takes a look at those to next month. I will put that in the consent agenda and everything is good. All right, next up is the code of conduct.
Public hearing. Yeah, so I've got, I mean, I've got quite a few concerns with what we're discussing here and what's, what's being proposed to be added. But before I go into that, I don't think we ever got confirmation. And you were going to double check if the public hearing was necessary to make changes.
Yeah, I communicated out to Councilman Ian an email that a public hearing is not necessary for this particular ordinance change related to a code of conduct. There are statutes that outline when public hearings are required. But this is not one of those items that is, that it is required by state law. Did talk with Rich and he was able to, to confirm that. I think I communicated that out to everyone and would follow back up if there were any changes to. What was communicated and Rich got to me, I think it was over the weekend, if I'm not mistaken, Rich, that, that we did not need to have one. But also as outlined in the email to council is that historically the town has always taken the approach. Of having a public hearing anytime we update our ordinance, whether state law requires that or not. It is certainly within the decision of the council to decide whether they want to do a public hearing or not. When the agenda was created, we put it as a public hearing for April to, to schedule tonight for April's public hearing. And we did that following the same process that we used in May 2018, which was the last time we updated the code of conduct. So definitely options out there for council to consider. And so you do not have to do a public hearing if you do not want to.
That is correct. Well, then I'll just go ahead and get into it. For those that don't know and for the public that doesn't know. What's being requested to be added that council will now be scrutinized 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Including in person, virtually and on social media. And those of you that have heard me talk about this before, I've had a problem with this section from the beginning and that's section F. Subheading in unofficial settings. So that's not part of our official business. And before I go any further, I'll have to tell you a little story. Before. Before the Oxford Dictionary, which is the standard. There was another dictionary and it was called just a dictionary of the English language. Bear with me here. It was written by a man named Samuel Johnson. Some of you meansters out there will know the meme of the guy kind of sitting up with a confused look on his face. When he finished this book, everybody loved it. It was like the seminal work. And he got praised all over town for his work. But he also got praised for another reason. And that's for what he left out. Now, a group of. Respectable ladies in London showed up at his house and said, and let me get this right. Mr. Johnson, we congratulate you for not including any indecent words in your dictionary. And he replied, ladies, I congratulate your persistence in looking for them. So I'll give you guys a minute for those of you that are slow on the uptake, but it basically teaches us two things. One. That there is no protection from someone who is determined to be offended. And I am quite positive that with 2.8 billion dollar, 2.8 billion Facebook users. You can find somebody that's going to be offended by anything you say. Okay? So I don't understand this issue. That means that when I'm on a golf course joking around with my buddies. When I'm in my home, having an adult conversation with my wife. When I'm reading a book out loud, if someone happens to hear me and takes offense, it becomes a problem for this body. I don't think we want that distraction. We've got bigger problems here than somebody being offended from some social media post. I think the second lesson. That we can take away from this is there, there is going to be. I mean. If someone wants to climb on a ladder up to their second story and be offended by looking into your window by what they see. You can't stop them. They're going to find a way to be offended. Okay? I know this, this started for, you know, we're talking about jokes here. I'd also like to add in case anybody didn't know that a joke's not a joke unless it's at somebody's expense. And as far as that is concerned, this is still a free country. Last I checked, and there is a First Amendment. And it's my opinion. That section F in unofficial settings is a clear First Amendment violation. It strictly prohibits what you can and can't say. Congress shall make no law. Troy, I'm glad you requested the oath that you had to take and your oath that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States. And of North Carolina, period. Okay, we're being asked to say we are going to be scrutinized 24/7 and there are things that we are not allowed to say. I have a major problem with that. I got a major problem with the whole section. You know, at, at some point, we're all going to have to figure out how to live in a grown up society. This is getting ridiculous. So I do have a motion, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Thank you, Councilman Patrick. From the original complaint from the resident. One thing that I noticed in our code of conduct and that was missing was our ability to self-govern. As a resident stated in the email to us earlier, this is, this is a distraction in middle school behavior. So if you're going to go online and act like a middle schooler, we need to govern you like a middle schooler. Correct? I shouldn't have to do that. No one should have to do that. You, we are, everyone is over 40, I believe, except for one councilperson. Why should I have to do that? You should know better. I don't understand why you don't know better. It doesn't make sense. And I've said that to the councilman that this complaint was about. It doesn't make sense. So in order to protect all of us, there needs to be language in our code of conduct that we adhere to. Because again, we are adults. We're not middle schoolers. And I shouldn't have to do this. No one should have to do this for you. You should be able to do this for yourself. Another issue that I have is that in the complaint, an apology was requested. And I don't think the councilman ever did that to the, gave that to the resident. So where are we with that?
Well, I'd rather you agree with me, sir. You're saying that it's unnecessary to police people.
I'm saying we should not have to. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, we should not have to. I shouldn't have to do this. But in order for us to be clear about the expectations and how to act and how to govern ourselves, it's best for us to protect ourselves and put that language in our code of conduct to help us all be, be better, be better as people. This is a decorum issue. You need to govern yourself appropriately. And I think that's what the code of conduct is asking us to do. You have your right to state whatever your opinion is and, and do, do what you must, but you do not have the right to be free from those consequences of your words. You don't.
Well, I would agree. I would say that you have the right to act like a middle schooler if you want to, but you've got to answer.
If you do that as a, as an elected official, should you be online acting like a middle schooler? Should you be in person acting like a middle schooler? Should you be doing that? Is that appropriate? Because you got elected to govern. You didn't get elected to be a middle schooler.
Well, I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head because I'm, I'm what they might call a First Amendment absolutist. I think it means exactly what it says and nothing more, nothing less. And so what you're asking for us to do is concoct rules around these items. Okay?
No, I don't think that's concocting rules. I think it's adding additional protections for ourselves and, and our residents to know that we are there for them and being the good stewards of our time and efforts in governing our town.
This is Councilman Delinger. I believe in the First Amendment rights too. And when we sign a piece of paper, we sign that we would abide by the constitution, and that is the First Amendment. The First Amendment allows you to go to the newspaper and say certain things. So you cannot have it both ways. You cannot have it when it fits your right and it fits your pocket and then try to turn it against someone else in another town.
I don't think it's turning anything against anyone. You have the right to say what you want. You have the right to do that. Again, it's your right. I'm all for the First Amendment. You say what you need to say and make sure that you say it with conviction. You also do not have the right to be free of the consequences of your words and actions.
But I don't know what consequences there were. I mean, why, why?
Again, so there, there are no consequences. There were no consequences. So when we're looking at the process, we're looking at the process and policies and procedures. Again, this is not about the person. This is about processes and policies and procedures. Adding this into our processes, policies and procedures is going to protect us all.
I don't need anybody's protection. I got one question. I got, I got, I got one question. What is the difference if we do it or not? What, I mean, what, how are you going to hold somebody accountable for what they do? Whether you put it in there or not? Just, just saying.
How do we, how do we hold people accountable? We hold people accountable. I mean, I should, you know, one thing we should not be getting is a complaint from a resident complaining about a councilman acting inappropriately like a middle schooler online. We should not get those things. Right?
I agree.
That should not be something that we should get because you're all adults.
By something. I'm sorry. That's just the way it is, especially now, these days. I'm saying I don't need that construct around me. If it's bad enough, it'll come into this room. What I don't need is 5,000 people bringing it up and taking room, taking time away from this board that's trying to keep the trash picked up and the roads gone.
Again, Councilman Patrick, I think we're saying the same thing. We, we all need to be protected. I shouldn't have to be, I shouldn't have to bring this forward. I shouldn't have to get a complaint about someone acting inappropriate online. And knowing that they've been elected to serve all people and having a joke amongst friends in a public forum is inappropriate. You do that on your own personal time. I mean, and personally, and personally, I've had to, I've had to block a councilman from my own Facebook page because of negative behaviors on a post that I made. I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't have to, to, to do that for a councilman.
I, I, I think we just all need to act like grownups.
We should. You're exactly right.
You have the right to do that. And someone can get mad all they want. Okay? But if, you know where it doesn't belong? In a code of conduct. That's where it is not.
That's what codes of conduct are for.
Not in government. Okay?
Yeah, in government. That's even better. You should act with a sense of decorum. You should.
I don't know what it's going to do to put it in a code of conduct. I don't have a problem with it, but what's it going to do? I mean, who, who's going to enforce it?
Well, let me speak to that, if I may, because I know a little bit about not just code of conduct, but process and procedure. This council is more or less a board of directors to over 100 staff here at this town that is held to a standard and a code of conduct. Mr. Patrick, what you're saying is that you shouldn't be held to that, but yet we should hold our employees to that. I'm just asking a question.
No, sir, that's not what I'm.
So we should tell our employees that they are no longer under this code of conduct.
That's not what I'm saying at all.
Please elaborate.
I'm saying that you cannot say what I can and can't say. That's it.
That's not what that says.
Nor do, nor can our employees.
Nobody is saying that. What someone's asking is that you have decorum and act like a professional.
So I, so, so let's go back to an example. If I'm on the golf course with one of you guys and I make a joke and someone's hiding in the bushes with a recorder and they find that joke offensive, I've now committed a problem? I've committed offense? Because why? Because they found it offensive? Excuse me, but that's a restriction in black and white. You tell me what the difference is.
This was in place prior to you running for office? And if you don't think you can uphold to it, I would ask that you step down.
Really?
Yes.
That's hilarious. Because the first time you and I met, Troy, was in the bar down the road. And we had a conversation and you cussed at me and told me to get to stepping. Now, I didn't go complain to the mayor. I didn't send an email saying there's a code of conduct problem. I took it like a man and I ran for office.
And now you're trying to do away with our code of conduct.
I don't, I don't see how you don't understand this. This is a First Amendment thing.
That's a code of conduct.
Government shall make no law. It's an ordinance. It's a law.
So I, I, I'm just curious though, Ian, if, if, we don't know if, if in person, virtual and social media are against you saying that you can say whatever you want under the First Amendment. Why is it such an issue for it to be on here? I mean, because you can still say whatever you want to say, do whatever you want to do. Why is it an issue for this to be in here? I mean, I, I, I don't really understand what your court, what your, your, your issue, issue is. I really don't.
Because it invites the people that are determined to be offended.
I don't think it invites anyone that's going to be offended. What I think it does, again, like I said, is covers you, it covers me and anyone else that is on council from acting in such a way that is beneath us.
Well, I, I don't need any protection. Thank you very much. I, I, I do not want it.
So does this mean that you will no longer go to the newspaper and make comments to the newspaper, any council member? I mean, to me, you just don't stop at social media. You just don't stop at the golf course. So don't tell me what to say. Don't tell me how to say it and don't put it in my mind. It should not be there. This is the First Amendment right.
Right, right. And I don't think anybody has ever told you what to say, told you what to do. But what we're asking for you to do, and as, as a citizen, as a councilperson, I'm acting for you, asking for you to act with a sense of decorum and professionalism that is expected from the role that you hold as an elected official.
Now, with all due respect, Diamond, you just told a council member not to act like a middle schooler.
I'm reading what the email said. This is what it says. You were elected to govern not to enable distractions and middle school behaviors. Don't act like a middle schooler.
I'm saying you have the right to act like a middle schooler if you want and accept the consequences.
I mean, really, Councilman Patrick, it, it just, you know, you're going around in circles for no reason. Either you're against it or you're for it. So I, so what I'm hearing from you is that you think it's okay to be online and be incorrigible to the residents that we are elected to serve. That's what I'm hearing from you.
Mayor, Mayor, let me jump in real quick. Diamond, I think that maybe Councilman Patrick doesn't want the whole group to be involved in this, the whole council. Maybe the person that made the accusations should be dealt with. Why are we all signing this agreement that it, it aborts our First Amendment right? I mean, I don't understand what, if we do that, what's, what's going to happen if, if I do?
I don't think it, I don't think, again, Councilman Russo, I don't think this goes against your First Amendment rights. What it's saying is that you will act in such a way that the public, the people that you serve as, as elected officials can feel comfortable with you and that we shouldn't get complaints about any kind of behavior.
I agree with you. I don't mean to interrupt you. So if you don't, what happens? That's my thing. What, what?
If you don't, if you don't, I mean, again, that's, that's up to all of us as, that's up to all of us as a board to decide what that is.
Well, the problem is.
After a complaint or, or anything comes to us, that's up to all of us to decide that.
And I agree with you, but it doesn't matter. If you censor somebody, it doesn't matter. And you can't be excused from the board unless you have a felony. So what does it do? That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Besides slapping him on the hand and calling, calling the person's name out, what good is it? What is it? I don't know. I'm just saying, what does it do? Nothing. So why have it in there? If there's no repercussion, if you're going to smack me on my wrist like the nuns did in grade school, what's it going to do?
So the, I mean, from my understanding, any repercussions from council would be a censure. I mean, that's as far as we go. There's no, there's no financial, there's, there's nothing big like that. The only thing we have is a censure.
And it doesn't do anything. It doesn't mean anything.
So then why is it such an issue to put it in here? If it doesn't mean anything, why is it such an issue?
Then why is it so, then why does it make a point to put it in there then?
Because again, it's, it's for our protections and for our citizens to protect them as well.
Then if you're going to put that, I want you to put in there, you will not talk to a newspaper. Point blank, period. Done deal.
Me specifically, or for all of us not to speak to the newspaper, because I mean, you got to be clear.
All of us, all of us.
Yeah.
I'll just give you my motion. We can take a vote.
So first, before you do the vote, Ian, I would like to request for that councilperson to apologize to that individual.
I think I'll just continue. I motion.
I mean, I would like to, I would like for that to happen tonight.
We'll hold that for a second. We'll let Ian announce his motion.
Section F, subsetting in unofficial settings, because there's no sub letter, of the council code of conduct be strictly in its entirety.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? And then we're good to vote. All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron?
Aye.
Councilman John?
Aye.
Councilman Rodney?
Aye.
Councilman Ian?
Aye.
Councilman Rick?
Aye.
Councilman Troy?
Nay.
Councilman Diamond?
Nay.
Cheers.
I'll say something real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Regardless of it, if it's in there or not, kind of what I've learned in my short life, since I am the youngest one here, thank you, Diamond. But my entire life has pretty much been in a fishbowl with my professional career and even my role here. And, you know, regardless of we have something on paper or not, to me, it has always been my job or my goal to always be the example, to be the standard and for people to want to look up to me. I think in this role, I think it's very, very important. So we do have a lot of full-time employees. We have members of the public. And I think, you know, it's beholden upon each and each one of us to try and set that example. So whether it's there or not, I just encourage everybody to just be mindful of what they say and try and conduct themselves in a very professional manner. So, my God.
Thank you. I, I actually agree with you. I just won't be told it. You understand the difference?
Yeah. And I mean, I agree 100%, but there are consequences for what you say. So.
Yeah.
We've all seen that. I think on the first hand here, so you know, it's one of those things. It's, we sit here and everybody's been kind of acting like middle schoolers and it's, it is what it is, but I just would like to think that I'm going to try and be the standard. I'm going to try and be the one that does it, sets the good example. I don't always do it, but I'll try.
I agree with that, Councilman. Again, I, I'm requesting an apology for that resident from the councilman that the complaint was submitted for.
All right, here it is. We're going to move on. We're going to go to new business parks and advisory board member appointment.
All right. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. If you recall, we have three vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We filled two of those vacancies at your meeting last month. We continued to advertise the remaining vacancy on the board. We did receive one application from Mr. Brett Crosby. Brett is a resident of Harrisburg. He is active in our community. His children do participate in our programs. And he also serves as the executive director of the Harrisburg YMCA. And then, as you know, we also partner with the YMCA on different programs and events throughout the year. So Brett was interviewed by the subcommittee that was formed by the advisory board. He attended the February 22 advisory board meeting and the board did make a recommendation to appoint him for that final vacancy. The staff at this point is just requesting for council to make that final appointment for that vacancy on the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. Going down the list, Councilman Ron?
Aye.
Councilman John?
Aye.
Councilman Rodney?
Aye.
Councilman Ian? Councilman Rick? Councilman Troy?
Aye.
Councilman Diamond?
Aye.
Aye, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ian.
All right, moving to action items.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I've got just two action items from the February meeting.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I've got just two action items from the February meeting that I wanted to provide an update on. The first, we were asked to look into sponsorships for Parks and Recreation, kind of audit what our processes are and policies related to that. Our staff is currently still doing that. We do have some additional information that we want to present to council during the Parks and Recreation budget presentation. So we'll hold off on that to get guidance from you. Specifically, we introduced an opportunity for a sponsorship of the scoreboard that'll be located at Harrisburg Park. So we want to make sure that we get your direction on that and are following your guidelines closely on that. So that, more to come on that. The second item was to get the code of conduct edits that were recommended last month. We just flushed those out and, and got that reviewed. So we've accomplished or will by the end of this week accomplish both of the action items from February. I've got several things from tonight's meeting and I just kind of want to run down those. I've got a lot of feedback here that I won't necessarily present as an action item, but I do take note of that and staff will follow up with those particular items. The action items in terms of getting council guidance on using staff time to move forward with, we do want to get updated information on the website for Harrisburg Park. I think that's very important. Our staff's actually already started to work on that so we can get that information out there for folks, especially with the opening coming very soon. We'll look into the signal issues at Roberta and Veterans that was mentioned. That, that won't be too big of a problem for us. We'll also look into getting a DEQ contact on the website for residents to go to if they need to submit any issues or complaints related to flooding or stormwater issues in their areas. We'll also get an NCDOT representative to provide us a meeting update at a future council meeting. We'll also work to lay in our transportation priorities at a future budget workshop so the council can kind of collectively get their thoughts together and reprioritize those because it's been a couple of years since we've done that. So we'll do that as part of our budget process. And then last but not least, we'll look to get those sustainability board bylaws reviewed by our town attorney and placed on the consent agenda for next month. Any items that I may have missed? Everybody good with those items that I outlined?
The traffic at Tom's Query and Caldwell. Keep an eye on it.
Yes, yes, we'll keep an eye on that. We'll work with law enforcement on that. That was, I do have that on there, but it was one of those things that we'll just talk with law enforcement on, on paying attention to.
Anything else to say? You're done. I don't think we have a closed session tonight, so we'll, after a motion from adjourned.
We can adjourn.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Properly seconded. I'm not gonna go down the list. All in favor say aye.
Aye.